Tom, how are you doing? Okay, hello everybody. So I'm going to call the role for the Subcommittee on the Conference on Housing, on the evictions facing the City of Chelsea. Counselor Naomi Zabich.
Present.
Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero is absent. Counselor Leo Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Calvin Brown.
Here.
Counselor Damali Vido. I see Damali. Counselor Melinda Vega. Counselor Ymir Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Roya Vigilantes here. Counselor Ennio Lopez.
Oh, I got an email he wouldn't be here tonight.
Okay, Counselor Lopez will not be joining us. So the reason for this meeting is an order that was presented by Counselor Judith Garcia to discuss the pending evictions facing Chelsea residents. I'll let her make an opening statement and then we'll open the floors and start to have a discussion. We do have here the officials that were invited to attend along with stakeholders was the city manager, Tom Ebersino, he is here tonight. We have the Director of Housing and Community, Alex Train, he's here tonight. I see on the list also was the Chelsea Collaborative, the Neighborhood Developers, Green Roots, and all members of the public. So with that, I'll let Counselor Judith Garcia open up and make her statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also beforehand, I also want to thank everyone, all the different stakeholders, including our city manager and our Director of Housing and Community for being here today and other staff from our city to give us really a vision of what the city's role is in this larger conversation. I know that there has been an amazing group of individuals, leaders, stakeholders, and nonprofit organizations who have been collaborating on having these larger conversations and have been advocating for many of our residents during this housing crisis in our community. And I know those conversations have been very productive and a lot of good deeds have happened from those conversations. And the reason why I called this meeting is because I think it's very important for this body, this council body, to have a better understanding of what have we done, which I know many of us have approved many of those monetary resolutions that have brought a lot of, have served as a lifeline for many of our residents. But I also want to hear from our Director of Housing and Community Development, you know, what have we done? What's our vision? What are you hearing from these conversations? What are some of those challenges that we expect to continue to see as this moratorium has reached its limit, of course? And, you know, what, give us that intake of, you know, what have we done? What's our vision in the future? And what are some of those potential challenges that we may be facing that we should be thinking of ahead of time? And the role that we can play as a government in all of these conversations? So with that being said, I'll give Alex Train the floor to share.
Brief presentation, if that's all right?
Yeah.
I can pull it up on the screen for you all.
Great.
Alrighty, so, good evening. Thank you for the invitation to speak at tonight's Subcommittee hearing. My name's Alex Train. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development with the City of Chelsea. And I'm joined tonight by Sehuy Cooper, our Housing Development Project Manager, and Desiree Valentin, our Housing Coordinator, is calling in on WebEx. And we wanted to provide you with a presentation tonight of some of the efforts we have underway right now that relate to evictions and foreclosures. And then talk through what we really foresee as the main challenges and obstacles facing the city for the year ahead. Additionally, we're also joined tonight by some of our community-based partners who are extremely grateful to have joining in on the meeting and the opportunity to work with on a regular basis. So I know they have some input to provide as well. So our department's vision and real mission encompasses housing in many different elements. Our department seeks to build, promote, and advance affordable housing of all kinds. That includes affordable homeownership, affordable rental housing, housing rehabilitation, and the implementation of housing programs for low and moderate income Chelsea residents. Moreover, our department takes seriously a responsibility to provide resources, education, and the tools the public need to secure sustainable, inclusive, and affordable housing. On any given day, our department's involved in housing financing, architecture and design, and anti-displacement initiatives that help keep Chelsea residents in their home and able to stay here and raise their family here. Moreover, we're increasingly addressing racial inequities and fair housing in many of the programs that we run. Right now, as you know, the city has been hard hit by COVID-19. Our unemployment rate as of the end of October stood at approximately 9% compared to the state's unemployment rate of about 6%. Primarily, that's due to the fact that many of our residents work in some of the hardest-hit sectors like retail services, restaurants and entertainment, and other education, healthcare, and frontline employment opportunities that have been racked by COVID-19. Moreover, before the pandemic, our residents faced a high share of housing cost burden, meaning that many residents paid more than 30% of their income to housing costs. That includes over half of renters in the city and almost one-third of homeowners with mortgages paid more than 30% of their household income. So that really set the stage for the pandemic to acutely and pretty gravely inflict harm on residents because of sort of the economic conditions leading up to the crisis. So many of the programs that we run and the policy that we advise on stems from our community engagement with residents and community-based stakeholders. We participate in numerous federal, state, and local forums of collaboration. This includes professional associations, regional boards, and local steering committees and advisory groups that confer on all topics related to housing. Most recently, we've been a member of and participating in the Anti-Displacement Roundtable, which is a phenomenal group of local community stakeholders active in the housing space. These organizations meet once a month to discuss housing advocacy, housing policy, and how they can together as their respective agencies coordinate together to better serve residents. Moreover, on the direct services front, we've convened an eviction task force to deal with tenancy preservation. Meeting weekly, our eviction task force comprises community-based organizations that are on the front line of housing service. Additionally, healthcare providers, mental health workers, and other community partners participate in these weekly sessions with the goal of coordinating direct services. Each week, together as a group, we address housing cases that are complex, that are intricate, and that require multiple agencies at the table having productive conversations about solutions. Since the moratorium lapsed in October, around October 18th, we've begun to gradually see a rise in evictions, and this table has become more and more active. Although only 98 evictions are active right now in the housing courts from Chelsea, this number does not capture the number of eviction notices that have actually been sent to residents. So through our eviction task force, we've begun tracking eviction notices, often referred to as the 14-day notice, that are sent to residents throughout Chelsea. These notices are not registered with the courts, they're not formally filed, and they're notoriously hard to track. We've begun in earnest tracking these in consultation with our community-based partners and coordinating services to both the tenants as well as the property owners consisting of financial relief, legal aid, and housing counseling. Additionally, we've begun to leverage the state resources that were made available through the Governor's Eviction Diversion Program. You may recall that Governor Baker allocated about $170 million for foreclosure prevention, tenancy preservation, and anti-displacement. We've begun a capacity-building initiative at the local level, seeking to build on some of the success our community partners have had in unlocking these resources for residents. With approximately $160,000 budget, we've partnered with local agencies to hire Chelsea residents to assist folks with applications and the financial processing needed to unlock these funds. The state rental assistance, the state mortgage assistance, and other forms of state housing programming are infamously difficult to access. The programs require significant backup documentation and lengthy application processes. So it was important that we bolstered our capacity on the ground to help residents navigate this complex web of processes. Additionally, we've begun implementing the second round of our Emergency Rental Assistance Program to fill the gaps that the state program does not address. Oftentimes, the state program, which can only serve residents up to $10,000 per month, or $10,000 per the housing balance that they owe, is insufficient to help them, given the amount of housing debt that has accumulated because of the pandemic. The second round of our Local Rental Assistance Program was modeled after the efforts that we managed over the course of the spring. It's dedicated to residents making up to 50% of the area median income, funded through the city's CARES Act dollars, and the application period recently closed last Friday. Similar to round one, we project that this program will serve approximately 300 households through a lottery process that weights households based on their need. Moreover, we will coordinate closely with the state rental assistance providers to ensure that we're not duplicating benefits and to ensure that we're properly addressing the housing debt that households face. But all in all, right now, there's really inadequate funding available, both at the state level as well as the federal level, to address the housing insecurity that's faced by tenants. While the state program provides up to $10,000 per household and the local program provides up to $5,000 per household, that combined balance oftentimes is not enough to make the difference for tenants, allowing them to stay in their home. Meaning that even after tapping both of these sources of assistance, tenants will still face debt that they've accumulated over the course of the pandemic, and they'll still face the prospect of having to pay future rent without any prospect of employment or income on the horizon. As part of this effort, we've also established a legal clinic to represent low and moderate income Chelsea tenants. This is sort of the second prong of this multi-pronged strategy that involves financial assistance for tenants and property owners and legal support for tenants facing eviction. This service is provided to low-income tenants up to 50% of the area median income and is designed to help tenants navigate the complicated court process that eviction entails. One of the major goals of this initiative is to mediate before it reaches sort of a court system. Many times, tenants and property owners will approach us with cases that have not consisted of formal eviction notices, but they soon will. Our experienced attorneys and housing counselors are able to negotiate and mediate with property owners and tenants in order to establish payment plans and establish a sustainable path to paying off outstanding housing balances in order to achieve security. Often...
Sorry, one quick question. With the budget, $380,000 whether it was off contract, is that the money that the contractor is using to help these families with eviction proceedings? Or is that the money that they're getting as pay for their services?
Correct. That's the money that's covering their staffing, their office space, the hiring of three full-time attorneys, a full-time case manager, and administrative support staff. So it pays for their time that they spend in court. It also pays for the time they spend mediating cases between landlords and tenants.
And our contractor is Mark Rossi.
Chelsea Legal Services, right, it's headed by Mark Rossi.
Okay.
To follow up, is there, I know that this was never presented previously, but is there a way that that budget could be presented to the council so that we have a breakdown of how that budget was made up?
Absolutely, yep. We can send you that after this meeting. And so that's a 12-month contract that goes until next fall. So on the homeowner's assistance side, we face a similar but slightly different issue with low and moderate income homeowners. Low and moderate income homeowners throughout the city are currently at risk of eviction for two main reasons. You know, first, many homeowners have experienced a loss of income or a loss of employment, similar to tenants. But moreover, for the owner-occupied properties that have rental units, many homeowners have experienced a loss of income from their rental units. To address these issues, we've begun a homeowner stabilization program in partnership with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board with the second round funded by Chelsea City Council. Additionally, we're coordinating closely with Chelsea Restoration Corporation, who provide free foreclosure prevention services to homeowners facing foreclosure. As part of foreclosure prevention services, we're also seeking to assist homeowners in obtaining forbearance arrangements with their lenders. These arrangements allow a slight reprieve in their monthly mortgage payments while homeowners can get back on their feet in order to pay their monthly mortgage. As part of our homeowner stabilization program, we've tried to address this insecurity by offering direct financial assistance. Financial assistance has been provided to homeowners of one to four unit properties at differing levels depending on the property size. So originally, this was funded by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board with a $250,000 allocation. Funds were set aside for single and condo unit properties, two-unit properties, three- and four-unit properties. Following a three-week application period, approximately 79 applications were received by income-eligible households. These applications are presently being reviewed and evaluated by our contractor, Chelsea Restoration Corporation. As part of this evaluation process, we're also coordinating with CRC on foreclosure prevention services and housing counseling in order to ensure foreclosures don't harm these households. The second round, which was generously funded by Chelsea City Council, is projected to launch in January, following the completion of round one. And then lastly, we recently established an emergency housing program that's designed to act as a safety net for when tenancy preservation and foreclosure prevention simply isn't enough. As you know, in Chelsea, we do not have a dedicated homeless shelter, but increasingly, we're faced with homelessness as a very real and significant threat to the community. In order to address this threat, with CARES Act funding, we've established an emergency housing program. This program is comprised of case management services, housing counseling, and temporary emergency shelter for vulnerable households throughout the winter months. Recently, we've contracted with housing families of Malden, Massachusetts, in order to provide these services. We're in the process right now of developing an intake process that will be used by the department and many of our community-based partners to assist residents in accessing the system. Once the resident's initial request is submitted, our housing case managers will perform a needs assessment and develop a housing plan tailored to each household. This housing plan will consist of assistance with the permanent housing search, with locating apartments that are affordable and accessible for the household. It'll also consist of other wraparound services like mental health services. Our housing case managers will look to connect the residents with other emergency housing resources, such as resources available through the Department of Housing and Community Development and other state organizations. When all else fails, we've reserved $300,000 of this budget for emergency shelter throughout the winter months. Currently, our plan calls for the leasing of small apartment units in order to provide emergency shelter for households that bridge them throughout the winter until we can secure more permanent housing. This is simply because of two main reasons. First, the existing homeless shelter capacity in the region has been outstripped. Simply put, there's not enough beds in homeless shelters in order to meet the unfortunate rise in demand. Second, there's oftentimes a lag between the point where you contact the state for emergency housing resources and the time that you actually can get a family into those resources. Sometimes that lag can be a day or two, but other times it can stretch onwards for two to three weeks. In order to ensure families aren't on the street for that period, we've reserved these emergency shelter apartments in order to provide shelter in the winter months while these resources are coordinated and connected to the residents. Additionally, we'll look to coordinate with CAPPIC and other emergency housing providers throughout the region in order to ensure residents can come out of this program with a permanent and stable housing situation.
Can I follow up on that last comment? Maybe they're just not involved at this moment, but they could be, and I am just not aware of it. In order for, in some cases, my experience, and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, many times if someone goes and tries to find housing of someone who is in this, either facing homelessness or is in an emergency situation, they have to be in an emergency shelter to get assistance from Chelsea Housing Authority, I think, to get into, on their list, or to work and super, and go around the list, basically, if there's an emergency situation. But in order to be there, you have to be in an emergency housing situation. So are there conversations in all of this, is, are there conversations with Chelsea Housing Authority in this planning? And does this emergency housing that you're talking about right here qualify for that status that would be able to move a family from, say, one of these temporary emergency status homes into a apartment within the Chelsea Housing Authority?
Yeah, that's a good question. So many subsidized properties and affordable properties, including public housing, have that preference for formerly or chronically homeless individuals and families. So once a household enters this system, our housing case managers perform a needs assessment. And if the outcome of that needs assessment is that they have no other viable source of housing, they would be declared homeless and therefore, in many cases, meet that, meet that criteria, meet that threshold in a CHA property or another form of subsidized or public housing. You know, with that said, the waiting lists that we experience at both Chelsea Housing Authority, as well as other forms of subsidized and affordable housing, are often quite lengthy. There's oftentimes homeless or formerly homeless individuals even ahead of the waiting list where we show up with a household looking for an apartment. So, you know, one of the major gaps we have right now and the major shortcomings in the state system presently is just sufficient affordable housing for sort of permanent use throughout the region. You know, the vacancy rate in the housing market right now is higher than it was last year and the years prior, but that vacancy rate is primarily high in more expensive and higher-end housing. But for more moderately priced housing, we're still seeing vacancy relatively low, meaning we simply can't find enough affordably priced suitable apartments to place households in permanently.
Follow-up question. One, what is your currently, what is your relationship with the, besides TND, who is one of the largest affordable housing unit owners and the Chelsea Housing Authority? We have, Chelsea has one of the highest affordable housing ratios, and it comes to mind as buildings that most people don't think about, such as the Carter Heights, 855 Broadway, the Greenhouse, Elderly, the Buildings Across Street, Admiral Hill. Right now, what is your department's relationships with all of those property managers? Are they on the rolodex and are they part of this conversation? Because, you know, some of these families that we're talking about trying to assist are multi-generational. And maybe, yes, you cannot fit everyone under one roof, but particularly when we're talking about elderly, there's a large number of elderly buildings in Chelsea. So my curiosity is, is your staff currently, you know, in communications with all these buildings, with all these property managers, so that, you know, when you are provided with a case, you can call and have an established relationship? Because again, I don't, I know that they're not part of this, you know, group that is working, but it makes sense that that established relationship starts. So where are you in your department in attacking this on making those calls or having that rolodex?
Yeah, so some of those property owners sit currently on our eviction task force. Others don't sit on our eviction task force, but they're property owners that we communicate with and meet with regularly. So for instance, you know, right as I was heading upstairs tonight for this meeting, the property manager of Broadway, Glenn, reached out to me stating that there may be one or two available units coming up sometime in either January or February. So that's sort of emblematic of the relationships that we have with many of these larger properties. They'll try to give us a heads up when there may be units coming online, and we'll reach out to them when we have a case that we're managing in order to see if they might have housing available. This was particularly helpful during the fire a couple of months ago in Carter Heights, where we had to scour the city for temporary housing to house these displaced households until their units could be renovated. So we leaned on our relationships with many of them, including the Neighborhood Developers, who actually volunteered units that they had at that time. So, you know, we're constantly looking to strengthen those relationships. One of the efforts that we're going to be working on with our emergency housing case managers is to develop sort of a formal inventory of available units that we will be able to track and monitor at any given time, and others could have access to as well.
Counselor Brown.
The emergency housing initiative that you're putting together that is being proposed that you so eloquently talked about, I just want to know if you have any numbers of how many Chelsea residents that may have been dispersed from losing their homes that have now been through this initiative, sheltered into places?
That's a good question. So I don't have, I don't have good numbers on how many have been through this system just yet, since we're just getting it started as of about a week ago when we executed the contract. But, you know, throughout the course of the last month, you know, we fielded around 15 or so cases of, you know, involving residents that were either physically evicted and calling us while they were outside on the sidewalk, or residents that were being harassed or facing eviction from their roommates or from their landlord, unfortunately. Moreover, the Chelsea Collaborative has a pretty significant caseload of these households that they're attempting to assist, who are facing either imminent homelessness or they're already out on the street. So the numbers are growing, I can tell you that anecdotally, and once we have hard data through this program, I'd be happy to report it to City Council.
Okay, follow up. Have we any numbers, I know we just hired the eviction specialist, Mr. Rossi, have we have any numbers on how many evictions we have prevented or somewhat settled and were able to keep the residents in their current units?
Yeah, would you mind going back to that slide, Sehuy? Alright, so right now, we have... All right, so right now, we have about 95 households that we've either served or are currently being served through that legal clinic. So those are households that are all facing eviction.
Is it 95 or 98? For some reason, I thought I heard 90.
95 households. Many of those households, though, are households that the legal clinic's trying to serve through the mediation process before an eviction's formally filed with the court system.
Okay, so have we prevented any, I know they, you said sometime you have a discussion with the tenants and the landlord at this moment, once it becomes available, that the eviction is getting ready to take place. Have we been able to, you know, settle some and keep them in their current places without them being evicted?
Yeah, so out of the ones that we're serving right now, about 15 to 20, we've been able to settle with the property owner at this point. There have also been a small number of cases, about three so far, that have made it to the court system. One of those cases that was involved with the court system, we were recently able to have dismissed. They were actually a recipient of our rental assistance funding, and the property owner had violated one of the terms of our agreement. So that was a place where our city solicitor actually partnered with the legal clinic in order to, you know, provide a tenant's service in the court system.
And just very last question, well, not a question, but statement. Have we put this phone number on our website just to let folks know, I'm sorry, just to let folks know that these, this service is now available, because I know it's very in the infant stage, but I know we as counselors are aware of some of the activity of the initiatives, but tonight you gave us more than I was aware of, and I think it's very helpful if we just make it available for the general public. Thank you.
So we have a dedicated phone number to the legal clinic on the website, and we also have an overview of the different housing programs and resources we offer at chelseyma.gov/housingresources. We also periodically will promote that on Facebook, Twitter, and social media. So I can send you all that information after this meeting.
Thank you.
Chairman. Counsel Abidow, and then Counsel Robinson, and then Counsel Todd Taylor.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Alex, for that presentation. I really don't have a lot to say. I just have a quick question, and I also wanted to disclose that I am a member of the Anti-Displacement Roundtable that Alex Train mentioned. I just wanted to be transparent about that. My question is, the nonprofit that was mentioned for the housing clinic, how long has that nonprofit been in existence?
So that nonprofit's relatively new. They were incorporated, I think, December of 2019, right before the pandemic. So this effort has been sort of one part legal services and one part capacity building, which is something that we do with, with newer nonprofits, and that we hope to do more, where we provide technical assistance and our staff work with these newer nonprofits in order to, you know, provide any type of help with becoming sustainable and, and having sort of a future with services they can provide Chelsea, Chelsea residents. So it hasn't been without, you know, without headaches, obviously. Newer initiatives are, but it's something we think in the long term will really benefit residents. Once this program has sort of been, been sort of wrapped up in 12 months, you know, our goal is to have Chelsea Legal Services as a sustainable nonprofit that's able to serve residents without city funding, purely on its own.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you for the presentation. I also want to thank your team, Sayu and Desiree. You guys are doing an amazing job. I won't ask any more questions, because I know that some of my colleagues are not aware of what I already know. So I'll mute myself and be quiet. Thank you, everyone, for being here.
Counsel Robinson, and then Counsel Taylor.
To you, Alex. I understand, like, the Housing Authority, neighborhood developers, and all these elderly buildings, they have an automatic mechanism that they're allowed to be able to lower the rents and be able to help people maintain. Can you give us a number of any of the folk from any of those buildings that have come down looking for assistance?
So I can get you a number after this meeting on the exact number of Chelsea Housing Authority and the neighborhood developers, tenants that have looked for local assistance. But what you're saying is completely correct. There is a mechanism that's available for public housing tenants and tenants of other types of affordable housing. Not every kind of affordable housing, but many, many kinds, where if a resident experiences a loss of income or economic hardship, they can request a rental adjustment that can reflect their, their income as it is today to provide a temporary reprieve.
My, my, my last question, I know, I know we put up 170 million, you know, for the RAF program. I would have liked to seen some of that money go to some of the Section Eights that are made available to people, so that they would be able to have a mechanism of finding a place and being able to afford that, you know, for years to come, as opposed to, you know, getting a little Band-Aid right now and then coming back looking for help, you know, next year down the line.
Definitely, and an expansion of the Section Eight voucher program and an expansion of the, the state voucher program, Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program, it's something we're, we're advocating for, and we're consistently pushing DHCD to, to expand, because as you mentioned, it is more of a permanent solution, whereas RAF is simply a bridge to get people through two to three months.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Taylor, and then Counsel Garcia.
Alex, yeah, I first want to commend you on the presentation. I thought it was, I thought it was pretty comprehensive and well put together and very informative, and it did give us some new information for which I'm grateful. Could you go back to the slide with the homeowners' assistance, please? Right, okay. So there was 79 total applicants for this. How many of those 79 were also landlords?
So out of those 79, I want to say about like 70% of them were landlords, but only one of them applied for money that they needed because their tenants had stopped paying rent or weren't paying as much in rent as they were previously.
Mm-hmm. So, so are those people at all being prioritized as, these were, when, when we first came up with this idea to, to, to do this, these were the people that I had in mind that, you know, if we could, if we could help people out who were small landlords, not the big, you know, corporations who don't need any help, but some of these people who really are going to lose everything because they don't have the renters that are helping them pay the mortgage. So I'm, I'm, I'm actually not surprised to hear that 70, what, how mu, pardon me again, how mu, how many were there? Did you say 70%?
About 70%, yeah.
Yeah, so that doesn't, that doesn't surprise me too much that it's, that it's that high. So are those guys getting priority at all over the other people, or, or, or is it just going to be, are we going to try to accommodate everybody? I mean, if it's, how, how much, how much are they getting again to, to help with the, with the rent and the mortgage?
Alex, would you like me to answer this one?
Oh, yeah, that'd be perfect. Thanks, Desiree.
So essentially, for single-family homes, sorry, for single-family homes, you get up to $5,000. Two-family, you get $8,000. And three-to-four-family, you get up to $10,000. And if you are choosing to help forgive some of your tenant rents, then you are given higher priority in the lottery pool. Sorry for all the feedback.
That, that answers my question. So that means we're going to be able to accommodate everybody that applied?
We're going to be able to accommodate around 27 households out of the, the 79 that applied, just given the fact that, you know...
Oh, I'm sorry, this was 250,000, and that's, that's different than the, wait a minute.
Right, so for the second round, we could...
That's what I'm talking about.
Have enough funding to accommodate, like, everybody on that waiting list.
Right, so, so depending on how many people apply between now and then, you know, we just want to try to help as many of these people as we can, because, you know, a lot of people are in a, in a really bad situation. They worked very hard to get where they were, and through no fault of their own, of course, you know, this calamity has, has come upon everyone. So listen, I really want to thank you guys for the hard work you did, and, and, and I think this is an important thing to help try to get people over the hump and survive this without a lot of economic devastation. So thank you.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. So my question is just very general, Alex. I'd love to hear from you, what do you think are some of the key challenges, two to three challenges that, that you think will impede us from, from keeping this a sustainable program?
So...
If any.
So the emergency housing efforts and even the rental assistance efforts, at the scale that we're running them, were designed to be sort of temporary emergency efforts that sort of got us through, or at least helped get us through, the winter through the second wave of COVID-19. So in terms of longer-term sustainability, you know, we really look to the federal government to provide that scale and magnitude of funding for housing security. This is simply put, not something a municipality, no matter if it's Chelsea or another municipality, can afford to do every year, year after year, at the scale that we're, we're doing it. You know, there, there are a few challenges that we're facing on the horizon. You know, the main one is just the lack of funding. Even though the governor did allocate $170 million for the eviction diversion program, those funds are infamously difficult to access, and the process is one of the most complicated processes that I've, I've ever witnessed myself. So actually unlocking that funding in time, when residents are facing foreclosure and eviction that are very time-sensitive, you know, really doesn't, doesn't add up. So we're worried that there, there's funding available right now, but it just takes so long to access that by the time it might be tapped, residents are already losing their homes and out on the street. You know, I think the second, the second issue that we have to be somewhat cautious of is sort of what, what Todd was alluding to, around smaller landlords. You know, many of these smaller owner-occupied landlords are relatively dependent on their rental revenue to, to stay afloat. So we've begun having conversations with our Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, because we're, we are anticipating that there will be a slight uptick in foreclosure activity. It won't be anything like the recession, you know, well over a decade ago, but we do see these smaller properties falling victim to, to foreclosure. You know, I think third and lastly, the, the major overarching challenge that we're facing is widespread displacement of, of families, oftentimes, you know, residents of color, residents who are either first-time homebuyers or tenants working multiple jobs. These, this displacement goes beyond simply losing a home, and it causes, you know, families to be uprooted. It causes kids to, you know, not be able to go to the school they're enrolled in anymore. And it's really, we see people being pushed out to the periphery of the state, Lynn, Lawrence, all these outlying suburbs, farther away from their employment and farther away from their families. So that's what really keeps me up at night, is the prospect that over the next year, we could see the city fundamentally re-engineered because of displacement.
Wow, and just a, a quick follow-up to, to that would be, in all of your initiatives and your vision as a director, where can we support you as, as a council? Where do you see us being able to, to support your efforts?
You know, I, I have to say, Chelsea's really, we're kind of an anomaly, because this is a city council that although there are political differences, you know, housing security, both for tenants and for homeowners, is one topic that there's consensus on, and there's strong consensus on. You know, we have constant conversations with state and federal officials around funding. I think the one area and the one domain where we can always use support is advocacy for additional funding for the community. Additionally, you know, we really lean on city councilors to, you know, provide us feedback that they hear from residents and their constituents about how we can run our programs better, how we can be more culturally competent, and what programs we should be running. You know, these are programs that are created sort of in the spur of the moment to address a glaring need. A year from now, we may need to be considering different programs or a different version of these programs. So we really depend on you as sort of the eyes and the ears on the ground to inform us about what you would like to see in the city and what you hear residents looking for in terms of housing programs and policy.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all you do and, and your entire department. It's, it's been wonderful to hear everything and, and your vision and how structured it is and, and how we're moving that needle. And I don't know, Mr. President, if you want to open the floor to any of the other guests.
That's what I was going to say. I know that we have some guests invited online. I see them, and if they have the, want to send me a quick comment or raise their hand that want to speak on something that may have not been touched by Alex or want to go into a little bit of further detail, I'll open the floor. Please turn your video on, raise your hand, or send me a text in the group chat, and I'll try to recognize you. Can we have on the screen here, inside the chambers, move the presentation off from questions and discussion to the gallery view for the participants, so that everyone here can see who's online? And meanwhile, Tom, question is to follow up what, what Counsel Garcia has said. You know, Alex is presenting us with the in-the-city sort of view of what's going on to attack this issue, but she asked specifically what is going, and he touched upon it, something more the macro. Can you tell us what, from the state and federal level, we may expect, not expect, and what we may be looking at in the next couple of months here?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I just think that is just the question that we're all, all municipal leaders are wondering as to what additional resources will be coming down from the federal government. Remember, almost all of this spending that we've done, we've, keep in mind, since this pandemic has started, we've spent over $8 million in emergency relief for our residents in all of these various programs. $2 million was provided by the city council back in the spring as free cash appropriations. The balance of $6.1 million came from Federal CARES Act dollars. Those dollars are now exhausted. December 30th was the, is, is the last day you can spend Federal CARES Act money, and we've spent all of our $6.1 million. The question now is, is there a second round of Federal CARES Act-type relief coming? You read the same things that I read in the paper about where Congress is at this point. I think there's a sense of optimism that something is going to get done before Congress recesses. I think there's even greater optimism that under a new administration coming in in January, there'll be momentum to provide greater relief, direct relief to renters and to state and local governments for these kind of programs. So I anticipate that we will have additional funding for either an expansion of the existing programs that we have, or as Alex said, maybe transitioning to something different. But it all is a bit up in the air, and honestly, I don't have any more inside information than any of you have, simply by reading the daily newspaper as to where things stand with Congress. as to where things stand with Congress.
And where, where does the state stand when it comes to the status of the housing courts, the process of evictions? I know that the, the moratorium was lifted, but, and there was a backlog even prior to this all started in, in March. At the time when the courts closed, there was a backlog of 10,000 cases that still have to be taken care of and then maybe start this next wave, which, you know, maybe some of us are hoping that that backlog will be helpful to those who are facing and maybe given a little bit more time. But what do you hear about the status of the courts themselves and where we may be at?
So again, a lot of this is no different than what you hear and read anecdotally. It appears to me that the state courts are intentionally dragging their feet in, on these housing cases, that they are purposely moving at a turtle's pace so that they can give people as much time as they can. So even though cases are being filed, my sense is they are not moving at all. Lots of courts are operating with very limited personnel because of COVID. Chelsea District Court has been closed on at least two occasions because of COVID outbreaks there. So I think lots of these courts are operating on reduced personnel and therefore inherently things are moving quite slowly. And I think there is an intention, there is intention within the trial court and the housing court to purposely be slow in terms of moving forward with eviction cases. I don't, I'm not aware of any judgment that's been issued for eviction yet. Maybe that in some courts they have. I'm not aware of any yet. And there still is that CDC guideline preventing evictions that most people, most courts seem to be paying some attention to whether or not, you know, its legality could be questionable, but people seem to be paying attention to that December 31st deadline there. So I would say in general, I think things are moving quite slowly, but inevitably, people are going to be subject to evictions.
I see that we have Danalee Paulino from the Collaborative that had sent me a message via chat. If she'd likes to say anything, you're welcome to comment.
Good evening, city councilors. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Garcia, for calling this meeting. I also want to be able to take this moment to thank all the efforts that all the city councilors involved in this anti-displacement initiative. You know, the Housing Development Department, thank you so much, Alex, and your team. You guys have been fantastic. I want to be able to uplift the message presented today. We have worked very hard as a community collectively to, between our different organizations to support RAF application that, that does not only benefit our tenants and subleaseurs, both documented, undocumented, but also landlords. You know, in support with our efforts through the legal clinic, we have been able to provide pro bono legal support and housing rights and connecting them to RAF applications or home-based application that sustained people's housing, but also once again, support tenants. You know, I, I want to really want to, you know, call the city council to please understand that even though collectively between different organizations, CAPEC, Ringgus, La Colaborativa, the city, TND, we work tirelessly to make sure that we secure housing for tenants, there's still a huge gap in sustainability and resources and we want to be able to make sure that you guys understand that we really need to advocate and for, to the state to provide more resources for the city, to both relieve tenants and landlords. This is something that it should be a priority. You know, I cannot speak for other organizations, but you know, La Colaborativa, right now, we have four full-time staff that doing RAF application, both for tenants and landlords, and we get $0 for that. Every time that a tenant comes through, I'm sorry, a, some, a member come to our doors and need emergency housing, we are placing them in, in hotels at a cost of La Colaborativa. And I'm sure, you know, that, you know, every other organizations is doing as much as we are doing. I just want to make sure that we amplifying that everything that the city is doing, that has done is, is good, great step forward to protect our tenants and landlords, but it's not enough. And I'm deeply concerned about what the near future is going to look like when we look at economic sustainability, looking at the amount, a percentage of, of our residents that have lost their, their jobs and what we need to do to make, to ensure to support them to get jobs in order for them to stay in the city. So once again, please, in the near future, when you think about as a, as a city council strategy, how can we collectively advocate for more resources for the city? Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to make this statement because we have to be brief. We have a seven o'clock meeting, so if there's a final, I'll let Counselor Garcia make a closing statement, but we need to wrap this up in less than one minute. And I appreciate everyone coming out.
Great. Well, thank you, Council President, and thank you for everyone. Thank you, Alex, for that wonderful presentation and really giving us a holistic view of what your department specifically is doing and how you guys are a great ambassador for the city in these other conversations and these anti-displacement roundtables that have been going on and, and again, the eviction task force that has clearly been doing amazing work. And also to all the stakeholders who are present today. I know we didn't get to hear from all of you, but I know that individually you're all making, you're leaving a mark in our city and ensuring that we all tackle this in a collective effort, which is key. I hope to continue hearing the success stories of, of the amazing work that we're doing and have this conversation continue at, at some point. And if we can continue to help as a city council, we're here for that. So thank you so much, everyone, and thanks for, for attending.
All right. With that being said, thank you, everyone. We're going to log off and start our 7:00 PM meeting on ROKA. Thank you.